At an hour of six o'clock this time and we're gonna get started. And with that, Mike Sell, would you please take role?
Yes. Commissioner Woolley?
Present.
Commissioner Lehman will not be here tonight. Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair DeRosa?
Present.
Chair Frost?
Present.
We have a forum in our plus liaison is present.
We appreciate the Vice Mayor and Liaison being here. We also have Tony here with us and our manager. Was he stepping down? Let me back talk to him, please.
He stepped down.
With that, everyone who agrees with what I am doing, I have just permission to propose to use the play.
The flag of things.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Part this evening with a call to the public, calls to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the plan and zoning commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review the matter raised, or may ask of matters be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action on any matter granted until it's all to the public. All matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Oh, with that, I'll add the footnote that most of our new business this evening will include public hearings. So if you're here to speak for those items, do that. So anything else you'd like to bring before the commission this evening? See, no one responded, and I can't tell if we got digitally anyone like.
No.
None. With that, we'll close the call to public. And then on number five, which is approval or approval conditions or disapproval of events from the regular meeting held on June 5th.
I just have one correction. Somewhere it says I sent something. And I didn't say it. Uh, somewhere it says, Commissioner Lee, you heard about the drainage ditch for something on the property and that was. Um, check. Was. I'm looking at it. I'm not. It's on page. What's uh? What can I? Oh, there's page nine at the top. It says, Commissioner Wood, you heard about the flood control drainage ditch on the maps in this area. I don't recall asking that question. So if staff wants to go back and look at it, it's need that should even wrong.
Okay.
And for there's information, I submitted, I think, three items, just for small corrections and typos and whatnot that.
Yes, so Commissioner Gordon and Chair, you submitted um changes and I have paid them in the new one that I handed for add next to your package. And this chair, Alvin, it's taken over this to find.
I can make a motion then.
We'll make a motion that we approve them with staff researching that one comment that I brought up. Otherwise, I approve the minutes.
And corrections.
And with corrections, which is hard.
I'll say again, thank you. Hey, so we have a motion by Commissioner Woolley and the second by Commissioner Pro to approve the minutes filed to the inclusive meetings has directed and with the research that staff is going to do, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One S. Okay, new business. And let me just read something as we go to the new business. Um, item six A, B, C, and D. Requires each of these items, requires two public hearings before the planning and zoning commission. Per the major general plan amendment process, this is the first public hearing before the planning and zoning commission. Planning and zoning commission may discuss the proposed major general plan amendment, but there will be no action taken this evening. So this is for discussion and information purposes this evening. So so I want to get that out. That will apply to the next four agenda items, six A through G. With that, six A, this is the presentation, public hearing for the proposed major opponents. I should note that um after I open the agenda item, then we'll open it for a public hearing. So we can hear any comments that you would have before we discuss. Okay. Presentation slash public hearing, public hearing for proposed major general plan amendment for the Rankin Farm mining project. This is case PZ dash twenty-five dash thirty-eight. The request is to change the current two thousand twenty-two Florence general flight plan place types of suburban, wow, suburban, neighborhood, highway mixed use, and open space tied to the industry district type place, place type, and expand the aggregate resources overly across the site. This amendment is necessary to support the expansion of the existing sand and gravel mining operation from approximately sixty acres to approximately two hundred and fifty acres across several privately owned parcels. This site is located between northern bank of the Gila River and south of Hunt Highway and the north side canal and approximately one half mile west of the canal parkway. With that, staff presentation on this one this evening or?
Uh, the presentation will begin by applicant.
Okay. Hey, applicant, please introduce yourself to the record. So it's okay. I'm gonna hit shortcut through here.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna try this.
All right. Good evening. For the record, my name is Andy Jokums. I am a planning consultant with the law firm of Gilbert Blythe. I'm actually here pinching tonight for my colleagues, Paul Gilbert and Kurt Wall here. They are, they draw the short straw. They're very contentious at the end of the piece. So I'm gonna be presenting before you tonight. Uh, we are here representing the Rankin family and the Tanner Rankin Barnes. Uh, as we read in the record, this is a major general plan amendment that we're considering tonight. On the screen is kind of a summary of property as as the end is read, north bank of Peter River, south of canal, south on highway. We are. Apologize. Go ahead and move on here. To the west is Florence Copper, and obviously we're, we're a little further south of South, as you can see where we are tonight. Uh, we are proposing this minor. Back. We are proposing a major general plan amendment to expand the existing standing gravel aggregate operations that are currently on the ground. You can see in the hash in the middle. There's currently mining on the property today. The expanded mining operation will continue to the exaction of sand and gravel resources off the property. Will continue to maintain the exact same access on highway. And again, this is not an increasing mining operations, but an expansion into land as the pack of resources are expired in the current property. It won't be an increase in traffic, won't be an increase in activity. It's just expansion of the area that we could, could uh pull active resources. Uh, excavation will continue using the standard means of trap and real construction equipment. As part of the property, there will be an armored bank along the Gator River. Uh, that will allow the expansion to occur over that act of floodplain. Uh, that bank or that burn kind of has two functions. One, it protects us from the floodplain. Uh, it protects flooding operations throughout the area and will kind of channelize to either river. It will also provide a visual buffer for any kind of activity from the south looking to the north. Because of the way aggregates mine, because the weight of it, it really is a resource for the local community. These, this is a uh, a product that is heavy, doesn't, you know, kind of has scale, it's not good to move it too far. So the resources that are extracted from this property will be used in the town and the surrounding development. That aggregate is going to be used in just about everything you would think of from public works projects to concrete to any kind of development that's going to occur in the town in the future.
Recording and processing.
Okay, Scott, there's the, there's the access. We're only here tonight to talk about the problem. Sheet up there, that's the minor general plan amendment, uh, as was read from those various sources to the industrial district and the aggregate resources overlay. We've submitted current applications to both rezonement and do the conditional use permit, which is for a native aggregate operation. Those are going to be decided or presented back before this body after the general plan has been been processed. So we're going to do step one, first, which is determine if this is an appropriate land use for the property. If it is, then you come back and start getting the nitty gritty about the rezonement and conditional use permit. They gave me a nice little summary slide here. Again, we're not expanding, or I'm sorry, we're, we are expanding, but we're not creating a new operation, something that's already there. No additional traffic impacts. It's adjacent to other mining operations, as said, Florence Copper is just to the west. Uh, this can aggregate resources important for the growth of the town, supports for use costs and emissions. We did hold uh kind of community outreach as required. There was no public opposition. I can understand we are working to get some sort of letter from Eldorado Holdings and Merrill Ranch. Then they give me this nice big question. I think. I'm the third thing. Uh, so I've got the ability to answer some questions. I do have Eric Mears here with Bradley Aldridge. He is the selling pattern expert mining and aggregate resources. It's a bit early to talk technical stuff, but if you're ready to have some technical questions, he's my guy that's gonna help me out.
Thank you. With that, um, we'll open this, we'll go ahead and sit down with Danny and then we'll have a public hearing now to hear any comments, if anyone here would like to speak to this. And if you'd like to speak to it, why, please come up here and identify yourself with the record. Someone digitally. No, we'll miss. Okay. There's a public hearing. See, if anyone would like to comment on this, raise back the commission. Or?
I have a question. So I was at the public outreach meeting. Um, Vice Mayor and I were recording that meeting. You know, opposition and the footprint of actually the other does a change. But the comment was made twice, that meeting in here again tonight, that um the aggregate being heavy will stay in the community, it'll help our community. Do you sell direct?
Uh, you want him to come on up?
Yeah.
Yeah, please do that. He's great. That would be great. And then do this, please, identify yourself.
Sure.
Maybe. Uh, my name is Eric Mear. I'm with Haley and Aldridge, and I'm a geologist and consultant to the Tanner, to the Tanner. So your question, which was a great question, do we sell direct? Um, direct to like a homeowner or to?
To a developer. I mean, the comment was raised tonight as well as at the outreach meeting that the aggregate is good for the community, it's needed here, it's needed for roads. We have a lot of building going on, a lot of development, and it'll help developers. Do you sell direct to developers? Are you selling direct to the town? Uh, where are you marketing?
So that's, that's a great question. And so aggregates are extremely heavy. So they double in price about every ten miles with haul. So really, when you, when you drop the ten mile radius around the site, that's really where the primary consumers of this are, aggregates.
So you do sell direct?
We will sell direct to contractors or developers or to, to the town. Uh, and statistics show that about seventy percent of the aggregates that are sold in the state are actually produced for municipal municipal projects.
That's all I knew to know. Thank you.
I just got a couple, I think they're probably easy questions for you. Uh, what's, what's the mine out time that you're looking for? I mean, those of us that have been in Florence forever, Rankin Mine's been around forever.
Yep.
So what, what's the anticipated build out of the expansion or mine out of the expansion?
Another good question. It depends on how, how fast you're gonna build out your community. So it, you know, production will have been low as development happens and flows in the community. I think right now, at present, uh, at present production levels, we're probably looking at twenty to twenty-five years.
And that leads to the second part. Uh, is there any talk or ideas of sunset, sunsetting the property once? Once you have sold the last little piece of aggregate?
So reclamation is how we manage the project after mining. And so every, every project in the state is required at reclamation plan. The Tanner property will have a reclamation plan right now. That reclamation plan will be amended. And so the reclamation plan has a bond associated with the process that it takes to restore the site to the selected post mine land use. And the post mining land use hasn't been selected yet because that's something that we feel that will work out with the community and we move through the taxes.
Hundred percent. Okay, thank you.
I have no question.
Well, I, what's relating to the, that comment in there, says the mining activities of the site are completed. The land will be reclaimed to be a post mining condition, conformant to the state mandated reclamation plan.
Yes.
Where will we get to see the reclamation plan so we know that we're moving forward to?
Absolutely. Yeah, we would probably send you one as a courtesy and it would probably be part of the zoning process. But the state is required to send you a copy of the draft plan before they're, before they award, uh, before they get the grant.
So no thought process right now as to what that's going to look like?
Post mine land uses. There's been a couple ideas that's been thrown around. Uh, some of it is then flood control. Others, uh, other has been just open space, wildlife habitat. Uh, could be an inert light. I know that we wanted to bring that site back up to the original land surface. There's, you know.
There will structure which goes.
Right, right.
Okay, now this is my heavy question. And this slide for rent to the whole works. Um. And you say that the mining operation will require the expression of an armored perimeter with the blood water entering the work site. During the one hundred year flood event, this firm will act as a flood protection structure and a visual screen for the mining operation. Another, another spot of our, hydraulically isolated grass. I think this is in opposition to the town's floodplain ordinance because you are essentially creating something that will alter and um floodwaters from the one hundred year floodplain, pushing them elsewhere and removing these storage from the one hundred year floodplains. Why do you think you can legally isolate your site unless you're willing to have a few of floodplain maps? Well, on the setting then, and have those maps changed, which would be expensive and.
Yeah, you're correct on, you're correct on every point. The, the town Florence actually is a flood train administrator, so it is part of the flood. This now. Uh, we are, our, our company is actually preparing that right now. We've already had pre-education meeting with the, with the town. Um, the project is designed so that it won't have an upstream or downstream impact uh, associated with the operation. So the, the standards for flood protection uh here in the city are similar to uh, where they are in the state that we can't just push the water over to somebody else's property. We can't erode on somebody else's property. We can't, uh, we can't have a substantial decrease of the flood elevation. Uh, as a consequence, all the operations are designed so they're not in the floodway, which is where the main water channel is going to be, and we're on the flood plain. And so we do have some options for development. The best one is the armored burn. Um, and it wouldn't be designed if, you know, the pit has been designed, the burn has been designed specifically not to alter. Uh, divert, alter, retard the water course.
Any rest to see that. I'm a former floodplain administrator and we're floodplain managers. I'm all anxious to see that. I'm happy because it's going to be in Florence. Hopefully up to the challenge.
Yeah, I think we, we've got some pretty talented engineers. We're like, we're looking for a work.
Good. With that, let's see, cultural resources. I know in this area in general, there's been a lot of Native American ruins and lights bound. Concerns on this, the site aren't going to investigate, you're looking good to go.
The site's been investigated where the current disturbance is. Uh, the future disturbance hasn't yet, then that's a requirement to get a, to certify the material source for ADOT. So if we wanted to sell projects that were funded or managed by ADOT, we'd have to, we'd have to certify the source, which would mean that we'd have to do a biological assessment and we'd have to do a cultural assessment.
Um, the town's general plan, it notes that the northern canal is recorded or, or future trade. I see your site crosses on the northeast corner of the, actually crosses the north canal. Will that, would you guys, I just want to make it for the record that the town eventually would plan to do that and hope that you guys would go to work with us on making that trail happen.
Yeah, absolutely. The, uh, we would just, uh, we would want to integrate that into the post mine land use. That northern, that northeast.
Soon in twenty years, though, that's what I'm saying.
Don't you want?
Well, I, I don't know what we get around to. It's just part of our general plan. We have, they did.
No, I, I think it's fine because there's really no mining that's going to take place north of the canal. Uh, what's really going to be north of the cow, now, and I know that that border is going to change a little bit as we're trying to rejigger the, that border, but that would just be immigration, you know, like buildings.
It's just wonderful. We talked about it, so there's more surprises. Please make sure when you come and say, hey, I'm going to construct a trail. And with that, let's see what else has come up. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. You know, today we appreciate both of you coming out and educating us. Thanks very much. We'll see you in the future.
Actually, I'm waiting.
Yeah. Ask the same question.
We'll, they'll get a relaxation there.
Okay, here we go. Item six C. This is also a presentation and level carrying for proposed major general plan amendments for a sector of the farm. This is excuse me, dash twenty-five, dash three, four. The request is to change approximately seven hundred eighty acre portion of the existing plus or minus one thousand eight hundred ten acre Dobson Farms master plan community from the current suburban neighborhood place type from the two thousand twenty-two Florence general plan to the industry district place type. Proposed site is generally located at southeast corner of Kedro and Halloway Road. And presenting, please also identify yourself. Thank you.
I could help you with this one.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'll let the painting life for this PowerPoint up so I can go.
Apple.
That one. You're gonna end up with one different. Here he is, twenty-one ninety-eight Camelback. Here with Ryan Companies. I have a new this evening, Molly Ryan Carson, whose great grandfather started Ryan Companies in the nineteen thirties. Not so new Robert, Molly is executive vice president in Robert's Development Association. Uh, I see some, there's members of the Dobson family here as well, and we're gonna be talking about their property. Just push the button to. So, uh, as you mentioned, Chair, we were talking about the dot Florence tech park. I want to talk a little about Ryan Companies. Ryan was founded nineteen thirty-eight, Hibbing, Minnesota. Some of you may have heard this presentation at my neighbor meeting the other day. Uh, Hibbing, Minnesota is famed famous for two things. Ryan Companies can involve Dylan's birthplace. And I actually accidentally said Hibbing's one day, and I got in a lot of trouble because there's no S in Hibbing. So Ryan Companies is all across the country, seventeen hundred employees, thirty-one years in Arizona, two hundred plus projects. They are the premier construction developing. This is the site we're talking about. You see John to the north, all the way down to Arizona Farms, Addaway to the west, and then Felix, of course, in the canal to the east. So what are we doing here tonight? Tonight, we're talking about just the general plan. Now, next meeting, we'll have general plan plus the PAD rezon. But we wanted, we have to do two of these. We start with this one and go on to the next one to talk about that as well. Uh, this plan will significantly reduce the approved traffic counts as a kicker compared to the current general plan. It'll significantly reduce the water usage, and this plan will extend a great water sewer and road infrastructure in this area. And I think it's important to note, at this point, we did have a neighbor meeting at the Anth, at the Anthem Community Center. We had several people show up. Nobody was opposed. One lady said, can you build it today? Because I want these roads. I don't want these houses. She would, I learned a lot actually about the Anthem from that lady. It was, it was a very informative meeting. So what does Town Florence get out of this? We're taking existing agricultural land, we're developing something that will have employment opportunities and provide a needed service while reducing the water and traffic needs compared to those uses are allowed to then plant. Disemployment opportunities will, along with substantial tax revenues, develop impact fees, will help provide a desirable service out of the recent change in this area. And as I said, and I'll say it a lot, less water, less sewer. So why is this not suitable? And I apologize how text heavy this is, but a general plan amendment is very specific of how can you do it to make sure it meets the criteria set forth? So you're gonna see a lot of texts you also have in your packet. I'll try and highlight the text. If there's anything that comes up, just stop me and we'll chat about it. So original Dobson Farms BUD was in twenty-eleven, and then it was part of an MDC. That changed in twenty-two to make it suburban neighborhood. So why are we changing it? It's because of what's happening out there today, which we'll go through about the transportation corridors and how this area is changing. And does Florence need another eight thousand more homes? Does Florence need a tech park and employment center that is going to serve the entire community? So here's the site. This is with the transportation. So when you have the future five oh five, which I don't know when that's going to happen, or if it's going to happen, or whatever it is, but I'm pretty sure the central Arizona Parkway alignment is going to happen. And uh, we're actually able with AJ and Mari and the Penal County people, get everybody in a room. It's like, okay, guys, where's this going to lay out? How's this going to work? Work? How do we make this work based on what Penal County and the Town of Florence were, want from this project? And from the, the uh, infrastructure in this area, and this is what we came up with. So one of the questions is, what is the unique physical characteristic of the site that presents opportunities constraints for the development under existing classification? Because this site, as we just saw, is between two significant transportation corridors, it shouldn't be suburban residential. It should be employment. And so that's what we're asking for today, is to make this general plan employment rather than the suburban neighborhood that it is current. Lots of texts. We're just gonna like highlight this, but does it conform with the land use goals in your general plan? Yes, it does. And it's because we're taking that agricultural land, we're enhancing the community, generating employment opportunities, provide a needed service while reducing the water and traffic. Informed to the proposed range of land uses. Yes, because it's the change aligned with the trends of industrial employment use in this area. Uh, there's a devoid creation of isolated uses causing compatibility from a burden on service and system. Actually not. It's going to do the exact opposite. It's going to not have a burden on the system. It's going to take that residential and make it into employment. No issues with police and fire, no issues that would have on, on the private, public, open space, recreation schools. And again, I apologize about all the text heavy. I just want to try and make sure that we meet what it is the criteria is. Here's our public utility, water, wastewater, airport, electric, sovereign project, least fire count points. And what is the post fiscal impact of future development based on the evaluation projected revenue? If private will generate employment opportunities, the town will, the same factor revenues, develop impact fees, all provide a desirable service. What changes, if any, in federal, state law? There's nothing. It actually provides infrastructure. Um, how will it affect the community's sustained physical and cultural resources? We don't believe it places any additional impact on cultural and natural resources. And what is the ability capacity of water and source? We've talked about this a lot. Airport is the water and sewer provider, and I'll show you a slide here in a minute about. But this actually will upgrade everything in that area, not only water sewer, but also those roads, because we will be required to come in and, and improve the roads in that area. So this is an important graphic from my perspective. So at the bottom, in, I guess, light bluish, the original Dobson Farm is about three million gallons per day. With what you're here on this project, as well as the next two projects, the water demand. the water demand is a million, so it's about a third of what is proved today, so we're reducing the water usage by two thirds with this project. And the other projects, which we'll hear after this. That's really all I have, and we'll see you again in two weeks and open to any questions you may have.
Okay, I appreciate that, and we'll open the public hearing now to our comments or anyone here who'd like to speak to this, anyone here would like to speak to the site, pretend I'm. See no one jump up? Anyone raising their hand, no?
If anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Yeah, raise your hand if you'd like to speak to this ground line. If not seen that, we'll close the public hearing and bring back to the commission.
There, Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead, just purple, go ahead.
Say, project, but I'd like to know, have you have other, have corporations expressed an interest in incoming and establishing their business? So that's a great question through the chair, Ryan Companies has a history throughout the valley and throughout country. They, they do things a little differently than a lot of developers, they have people whose whole job it is to work with corporations where they want to come. The Ryan Companies go to where their clients want them to go. And so we have a lot of interests from a lot of, of, of good companies, or we wouldn't be here today, but I think that's a testament to the Town of Florence. I think you're seeing that this is, we're moving further and further down and that employment is coming further and further down, and that's actually from my perspective, a wonderful thing, I, I remember about eighteen years ago, standing at a general plan over an Anthem community for Florence, and we're trying to figure out what it was going to be here and watching it grow over the years. We wouldn't be here if we didn't have our clients calling and say, hey, can you look for something out here? And then we talked to Mr. Dobson, and that's how we got here today. And can you name any of those? But it didn't hurt to ask, did it?
You answered my question, okay.
I had the opportunity to meet the team at the open house the other day over at Parkside. The recitation was great, conversation was good, the cookies grew better.
Cookies, next one, okay, Molly, write that down, go ahead, Cal, we're bringing cookies.
Mr. Chairman, we have so many housing projects coming forward in the Town of Florence. I don't know how this will tie into even Eldorado, but Eldorado was to build communities, not just houses. We have twenty, thirty thousand rooftops coming on board, this area is going to need jobs, people can't keep leaving the community. Unfortunately, I'll never see it in my lifetime, but this is definitely something for future planning that will service community well, have done well, and I think this is an opportunity to do this properly and not just have you know, spit shot on the wall and see what falls, falls out, you know, having a Ryan Company come forward, knowing that there's a a project that is entirely coming forward in the future. Speaks volumes for Florence, I think offers Florence the, the opportunity to keep people here to live, shop, to play. While they get the restaurants, while they get the retail, yes, it will bring traffic. But that's where we'll also have to make sure that developers who come in do take care of putting in good roads, good access for the residents who live here, so thank you.
Well, I think another question.
Oh, sorry, I just, I was going to back up what she said, for those of us that have been in Florence our whole life, the Dobson family doesn't screw around. They see a project they know is going to work, they get on board, they support it. They don't bring stuff to a town that's not going to work, so. I just add that to your comments, so.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I think Dobson Family complies with Ryan Company, it's something that I think it's testament to the Town of Florence. Your, then your staff, and I, I will be remiss if I don't say your staff has been, has always great to work with. AJ and Mari have been great and holding my hand throughout the process, because sometimes I need it, but we really appreciate it, we have really enjoyed the process for the board bringing the project.
I don't need, oh, oh, I, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate the, the observation you made, because when we did the general plan, we didn't quite know where you like, none of those factor. You know, thorough bears were going to be, whether it's freeway or rest where, whatever we call, now we do on this side, I think as you said, is a good location for this type of project. You slipped right through the water slide, and I, I just had, just asked one question. I see in your narrative that you talk about data centers, and I know those things are water eating animals.
Mr. Chairman, they used to be. So they, they, that is about eight to ten year old technology, they don't do that anymore because they can't. So now they are more electricity eating animals, and it's important to note that right across the street from this project well, is also a very large substation, I think one of the largest in Penalt County, so they used to be water heavy, they're no longer water cooled, they're all electric, and so they need to be, and that's if, if I'm to be honest, putting it right next to the substation that is, I think is the largest in Penalt County, is the best.
It's actually a receiving station, then has a substation line.
But, right, so you, you know, yeah, I, I know, but I always say substation because that's, you know, what the, yeah, so that's why we want to be right there. And I think Mr. Dobson, who knows a little bit about that stuff too, is, has been helpful with getting that done, so it is, it used to be watered, now it's all electric.
And this might be more towards our, our, our planning team, I noticed in your prediction, you have Felix Road going north and ending at the canal. Is, is, is that a thought that Felix Road will actually do that, or is that just showing alignment for now, or is there any, any thoughts on that?
I think right now it's showing alignment right now, as we look at the P U D and the other aspects of it, the, the road network within Dobson Farms is going to be considered as we go forward. And we've had some of those initial conversations already, is, is was mentioned earlier when we were meeting with the county and talking about the central Arizona Parkway and talking about the future Arizona five oh five, we were really talking about the, the, that level of road networks throughout the development. Knowing that there will need to be some changes from the previously approved Dobson Farms because the previously approved plan had Felix Road continuing north, we're going to the west to meet Addaway. And with some of these other larger investments, others could need to be a, a, an analysis. And you really, or, or look again, how, what that transportation system is going to look like north of by Arizona Farm Road. What I'd also add to that is, as I believe many of you know, the Town of Florence is working with a consultant to update our transportation plan, and this is part of that conversation as well. So, and then we're learning new pieces of information, right, I think we recently saw something about recently published about superstition vistas and their ongoing planning efforts for transportation systems to north of Arizona Farms, up north all the way to Gold Canyon, so all of these inputs are being reviewed, I think amongst ourselves, but also with our, with our consultant team as we look at what we're seeing is sort of a changing of, of a development pattern in this part of our candy.
I just wanted to ask the question, it almost insinuated that it was going to go across the canal, I didn't think that was going to happen, so.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that, as AJ said, Mr. Chair, it's I think there's twenty people in the room, we had, they had to open up extra room because we had so many people to talk about transportation and Chris, the dentist drops was there, and your staff was there, and so we're open, we're just trying to figure out what's best, and so like, you know, we're just saying, what do you guys want, and we'll do it.
Very good. Anything else? Not for me.
That needs to go.
Well, you might as well stay up here because you're going to.
No, no, I'm at the next one, these two are the next two. I only do one.
Okay, so to see, this is also a presentation, the public area of the Dobson Farms East project is the case P Z dash twenty five dash fifty. The request is to change approximately two hundred seventy nine acres of the existing one thousand eight hundred ten acre Dobson Farms master plan community from the current suburban neighborhood place type in the two thousand two Florence general plan to the industry district place type. This amendment is necessary to support a concurrent major plan unit development for a plant, development plan, development amendments for a planned future general industrial and data center uses. The site is located at the northeast corner of Arizona Farm, Arizona Farm and Village Addaway today. Okay.
Hi, good evening, my name is Julie Verneal, with C B L Consultants, located at four five five zero, North Tenth Street in Cleveland. Today is very unique, and Chris Thompson, probably all. Thank you so much for hearing our case this evening, and it's going to be very similar to the Ryan Companies deals. So again, we're as Dobson Farms, instead of east and west, so two separate parcels within the Dobson Farms existing master plan community, this is the east parcel, it's in the northeast square of Addaway Arizona Farms, about two hundred and thirty nine acres. And then we have our west parcel, about six hundred acres, northwest corner.
That's the next agenda item, right?
Oh, that is the next agenda, this presentation covers both just for context, so it'll be the same presentation for both, I don't know if easier if we combine them.
I'm looking for a little panel there, can we come by this to the one side? Presentation, okay, I saw her in the new six, six C and six D sets of presentation is the same.
Sorry for that kick up there, this is the six hundred acres on the northwest corner. And I have the existing general plan maps for both, you can see we're in the suburban neighborhood area of the latest twenty twenty two plan. It was previously under the master plan community designation, which permitted all the uses within Dobson Farms. It was a, had a variety of different land uses within it, and the master plan community designation deferred to the P U D. This general plan update to suburban neighborhood has changed that slightly and it now permits a residential density up to eight twenty minutes per acre in commercial uses. In order to address the twenty twenty two general plan update, we're moving forward with industry district across the overall balance of the east and west of the channel. You can see that it's pretty much a continuation of the existing industry district land use in the area, there's a very large portion here to northwest. So it's pretty close to what the town envisioned for this portion. Plus, they're already permitted for a portion of industrial use underneath the Dobson Farms P U D, which I'll show you on the next slide, so this isn't far off from some uses that are currently contemplated within the existing P U D and permitted under that old M P C designation. Right now, we have the Addaway corridor, which is permitted or which had a proposed power corridor going through it from that able S R P substation that was discussed earlier, so you can see that this area is well suited for the land use that we're proposing. Here's that P U D I was referencing, you can see those two parcels in purple there that currently permit that commercial industrial use. So this will just be an expansion of that land use for the overall east and west parcels. You can see in relation to the Ryan Companies parcel on the east, there's an opportunity for plenty of interconnectivity in this large area of industrial acreage, that's plenty of flexibility that will be attractive for potential enterprises. And I'm showing a proposed naming on this slide, that'll be for our next case of a P U D amendment, but you can see that we're proposing that commercial industrial use which is why we're moving forward with the request for the industry district general land land use. Here's our intended circulation plan, you can see we have access coming off of Addaway. And then for the west side, access coming off of Addaway and Arizona Farms. Here's our transportation context plan, so we just showed the alignments for the central Arizona Parkway and the five oh five, so you can see where those will lie in relation to our site, our site design will accommodate those alignments and it's a good fit and a good land use to be near those future lines. Here's a map identifying the existing water means. Just for reference, you can see that we're located adjacent to opportunity for utilities. Sewer means, so you can see, we just need to tie in to those two remains that are coming from south. And we have opportunity for utilities in the area. And then as part of this request, of course, development will be required to pay development fees, which will go back to the town and use for parks and recreation, police and fire, road improvements and water and wastewater. Here are the benefits of our proposal over the existing land use. Of course, we're going to be establishing that industrial land use intended for technology, industrial data center and business opportunities. We're estimating approximately eight hundred jobs could result from this rezoning. As part of the development impact fees, we're anticipating about a hundred thousand dollars to police funding, one point four million to fire department funding and approximately two million in motorbike funding, and that estimated based on ultimate build out in the current schedule, so that's subject to change, but it's a close estimate. Additional benefits would be a reduction in the project traffic, the existing residential use wouldn't, wouldn't be more traffic than what we're currently showing with our industrial play. And new infrastructure improvements on Arizona Farms Road and Addaway Road as listed. And of course, this will conform to the regional county and ADOT traffic plan, so it will accommodate the alignments that they're currently proposing. Of course, it'll bring some sales tax revenue, we're anticipating approximately ten million annual tax revenues for the town, and as the as was stated earlier, it'll be approximately a third of the wire use of the residential project that it was previously entitled for. So we're anticipating a drop in water and food for this use. All right, I'm available with any questions.
Super, thank you very much. Yeah, this is my, open, open the public hearing, will include item six C and six D. Which includes the Dobson Farms West, the Dobson Farms East project, so both sides of Addaway Road.
Yeah, maybe just note for the record, it's the hearing for six C and D, okay. I think you said that, I heard the other description, I just didn't hear the, I have numbers.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, with that, anybody that would like to speak to either of these two items or both of them, it's time is yours. If you're online who would like to, don't, this, we don't have those. Anyone online who would like to speak to this item, please officially raise your hand.
Never a question.
Well, please.
My name is John Madova, I'm the Anthem hearing, here in Florence. Okay, beyond the council. And my biggest concern is traffic. They wrote five oh five, have no funding, so that will be coming in the future, but we still have no, no freeway. Same thing with the central, the town's considering. They don't have any funding for that either, so what's going to happen with the roads coming into the areas of Addaway and Arizona Farms? That's going to be our biggest concern as a town. Because we're going to need to although the traffic in the area immediately surrounding the project will have road construction improvements, areas going to it will not, so you're still going to have all that issue with traffic. So that's something that we need to, to keep in mind, I don't know if we have to do something with the town with the county, because Arizona Farms is not completely here, the Town of Florence is, so with those other projects, they're slated to stop right at Arizona Farms, so we definitely need to look at Arizona Farms and see what we're going to do with that road bringing traffic, hopefully the county finishes hot highway and then we can start working on Arizona Farms to kind of, I don't know how soon these projects are going to come, but Hopefully the county finishes hot highway and then we can start working on Arizona Farms to kind of, I don't know how soon these projects are going to come, but, um, we have, uh, I've got a godson that's sitting in the hospital right now because he just got hit by a car on motorcycle. He was on motorcycle. And roads out here are horrible. Um, although I want this project to come, uh, we definitely need it. Uh, we also need to make sure that we're getting these roads done prior to, to some of these bigger projects coming in, especially coming to those areas. That's all I have to say about it.
Yeah, based on AJ, based on your comments earlier, it sounded like you're going to, because of the timeliness of this project and the timeliness of the, uh, batch of plans to put it together and transportation, I'll just pull this right through there to take a look at that, sounds like.
Yes, um, the, all of those concerns are heard, um, and heard clearly. Um, so those will all be contemplated and I, and I know a number of those are looking at solutions, right? Uh, because land is one thing, but finding the resources to get the work done is second, right? So, um, yeah, no, the, the, this is a good points raise. There's a lot of work ahead.
Thank you. Well, still good.
One question. Who is C B L Consultants? Who are you? Please. Well, that's nice.
Well, yeah, consultants, co-advailing consultants, uh, we're civil engineering and land planning firm. We also do surveying landscape architectures.
I'm sorry, would you speak up just a little bit?
Oh, um, C B L Consultants, we're also co-advailing consultants. We're located in Phoenix. We're a civil engineering.
Sort of just a lot of who we're talking to this time. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, there's nothing else. Got through six A, B, C in brief. We choose it. Thanks. Next. Four sixteen. I did a close review. Thank you. Yes. Both public hearing and ready fact. Any concerns, comments, questions?
I think, I think we're all here. Saturday class. Very good.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, we'll move to agenda item number seven, which is directed report. Seven A is landscape code updates. E is development.
Yeah, so thank you. Mr. Chairman. Kind of there's, um, this, uh, first item under director's report, um, is a request that you can make, um, wanting to have a conversation about the landscape code. And I believe that, um, I sure Rosa had some, uh, things, concerns that she would like to do direct to the commission for discussion and possibly some recommendations of, for modifying our chapter one fifty related to landscape standards to address some of the concerns that that the vice chair had some.
Appreciate it. So we, um, we struggle with landscaping, we struggle with water. Um, I went through code one, you know, the down that we identify plants that are poisonous, uh, and the town kind of directs developers to stay away from plant material that's poisonous, but we do nothing to, to ask developers to stay away from plants that are also invasive. That are, uh, use a lot of water. They, they're invasive to the environment. They get into, you know, get into the infrastructure. Talking to, talking to the landscapers, it's like, you know, playing whack a mole. Uh, they no sooner pull out, you know, one root and another root is popping up. And we've, we don't address it anywhere, um, to help with erosion control. Um, it's some of the plant material that goes in, it's pulling down some of the, the walls. We spant them. And, and they're planted on, excuse me, they're planted, um, in the pot of right away. So while I'm not looking to control or develop, but saying, I think that there are some biological issues that we could address. So much the way we address poisonous plants, maybe addressing plants that are, are highly invasive, which are not, which are not good for the environment.
So is, is that something that, uh, that, you know, you're going to end the research on this? Are you going to give something to staff or you ask the staff to do?
No, I mean, I'm going to do some research. I, I spoke to AJ a little bit about it. Um, I think the Arizona Department of
On the resource.
Yeah, has, has a list of, of some of those plants. Uh, I think we should just, you know, use, use what's on the books, not looking to create a whole new palette of, of challenges for anybody, but whatever is, is there currently, we should, we should take a look at and try to stay away from plants that are invasive.
So, um, in our, uh, in chapter one fifty in part four, uh, regarding landscape standards. Um, there's a paragraph that, that talks about standards and requirements for the installation of landscaping. And as you read through that paragraph, um, there's a sense that continues encouraging the use of varieties of plants, trees and shrubs indigenous to arid regions, which are characterized by low water consumption. However, as we know indigenous, um, might need a comma and non-invasive comma to kind of get to the commissioner's point about while they may be indigenous, we may not want them because they're invasive. Um, so, um, to, to possibly sort out that point of adding some language, uh, to that section, maybe something that the commission may want to consider. Um, and then as we continue in the landscape section, um, there's a section, uh, talking about appropriate use of landscaping. And to the point that was raised earlier, uh, the code does talk about the state department of water raising system. Um, their list of plant materials, um, that can be used. So, um, again, I think it's to, to, to the vice chair's point, I, I believe that we don't want to reinvent everything. Um, but we also want to be aware of what is in that list, uh, but specifically if we do have a concern about, um, invasive species, even though they may be indigenous, um, that we, uh, my suggestion would be if that is the pleasure of the commission afforded recommendation to town council, that we would go back to, um, the standards paragraph, the beginning of the landscape section and include that statement about or pointing out that if you would like to see indigenous, non-invasive, uh, species, um, uh, you know, or
I think there's best practices out there. I'm not going to reinvent the needle. Let's just take the best practice that is standard and incorporate it into our own, into our own code.
I, I think we'll probably need to define invasive. Does that mean it was spread double its size in three months or that? What is that meaning? Otherwise, we would, my definition could be totally different.
Yeah, we would likely that had, there's, we'd probably go back to the definition section of the chapter to define.
Yeah, okay, good.
Um, and establish what, so when someone needs non-invasive or invasive, whichever way we want to define it, there would be some way in there. And then that would guide us in future generations as to what we meant. Uh, what we made, what we recommended and hopefully made these changes to code.
Because now that, now that you, the way that you, I, I appreciate the way that you put this on the agenda because it just left it nice and broad. So I'm, I'm going to step in with something else too. Um, we get a typical municipality palette that gets about somewhere between twenty five and thirty percent of its produced water back as wastewater. The rest of it is lost outside landscaping. We have no control over, um, what's used internally. It's, you're always, always going to have a low flesh toilet and control there. The inside is all taken care of. So the really long place that we can conserve water is at next to use. For me, open up the landscape code you want, and I have it all written already. Thank you. Um, that, put this other stuff in that talks about use of turf and, you know, the hard skate parts of landscaping too, that fountains, recirculation and other things like this and overspray. And do you want to take, tackle it all at once?
Absolutely. And therefore we're going to look at that landscape section and start there. Um, why don't we conduct a thorough review of that specific section and give it a good, once thorough review?
Can I get that language taken? Anything else on that palette? Okay, three D, the development update three D.
Um, so a few things I'd like to bring, uh, to the, to the convention. Uh, a number of final plats, uh, had been approved at town council in August and September. Um, is, is, I think I've reported previously, there are a number of final plats under review. We're at a stage of review. And, uh, Marcel and I are expecting, uh, uh, upwards of another, another eleven, uh, final plats will be presented to the town council in October. Um, those plats, um, are expected to be, uh, more final plats associated with the east of Felix project. Uh, the anthem Merrill Ranch east of Felix project. And, uh, we're expecting, um, to soon be, uh, looking at a couple of final plats for money. So a lot of work ahead. Uh, no.
Sorry.
Um, and so, so that's where we stand on the final plats, uh, a number of going on. Um, as you know, um, there's ongoing work, um, at Anthem and Merrill Ranch on the Sun City and Parkside sides. And, uh, there's a lot of growth there. Uh, we, we meet, uh, monthly with guilty, uh, to get updates on those projects and, um, are really excited to see the progress there. Often asked at this meeting, are, uh, do, are we seeing any commercial interest here or not? And I'm happy to report that we are seeing that interest, um, at the intersection of Hunt and Merrill Ranch Parkway on all three undeveloped corners. Um, we were recently, uh, made aware that, uh, Evecor did receive their state approval. Um, and so, um, that's a very positive step. Um, and Evecor, um, is now in a position to consider, you know, allocation of water for those commercial uses. So we're very excited to hear that. Um, we had heard from the development community that that was a, uh, a, uh, our hurdle to development. Um, so hearing that that's been taken care of, um, we're really expecting to see, uh, some action, um, on that corner. And there's definitely more to come. On Felix Road, we continue to see site, um, work at Mesquite Trails. And then, and if you've been out there most recently, you're starting to see walls go up. There's, there's some real progress out there as well. And then, um, what I, uh, Commissioner Cole, I know you were, were hoping to hear an update on the Hunt Highway, uh, and Attaway Road projects. Um, the town of Florence has Aiken Gardner, um, under contract is our construction manager at risk. So they're continuing to work on that project. Um, within the next week, they'll be submitting a hundred percent, uh, uh, G M P uh, for that project, uh, for the consideration of the town.
Hmm.
Um, G M P is, uh, um, guaranteed maximum price. Guaranteed maximum price, um, on that construction project. Um, and then, then that will all be considered by the towns, how to go through that project. Uh, so, um, really exciting stuff on, on that. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes and that is a, a pretty significant milestone. Um, as that project continues to go forward. Um, Hunt Highway north of Franklin, um, county continues to work on that project. Um, and, um, you know, we're, we're in the stage of land acquisition to, to secure the right of way, uh, for that on highway, whatever face it is, um, from Copper Basin to Franklin.
Very good. Soon is the better.
Perfect.
There's, there were at least two serious actions there again in the last two weeks, so.
And I, and I, I guess the other thing I'd mention about on highway that specifically is, is you know, there's a couple of times a day when there's a lot of traffic out there, um, uh, adjacent to the schools along on highway. Um, the public works department here in town is very aware of that. And, uh, and, and, and I know that they're, they're working on looking at all the solutions or ways to help mitigate, um, what you're seeing out there. You know, a drop off and pickup, um, on at school sites.
Yeah, that would be pretty dangerous down that road.
It is. And you, you start to see things happening, investments in the signage, uh, school zone signage, you know, and, and taking these steps. Um, um, I, I guess it goes to the point that it's understood, is was mentioned earlier. And it, it's some of the stuff's incremental in progress and some of this behavior patterns of people's behavior and things like that. So there's a lot to consider here, but, um, uh, needless to say, um, the work is ongoing.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Not on that, but on Mesquite Trails, AJ, some Mesquite Trails is northeast on Felix. They're, um, getting to clear brush, way south. Is that for more development or is that to put in, um, sewer lines?
Uh, uh, ultimately both, right? Um, that is the sewer line that serves what you see as Mesquite Trails that the, the area's being raided and exceeds the, the vertical walls being built. But it's the balance of that development as well, right? So Mesquite Trails is that kind of.
First railroad track. Is that what could be housing too? That's not.
That's part of Mesquite Trails.
I know it's part of the ski trails. I didn't know if they were going to build there or if they were just putting the sewer line there.
Right now you're seeing the clearing for the sewer line.
So that's.
But they have recently come in with platte approvals as well. They're just not that far along. They're, they're going to, you know, kind of build out, start building from the north south. Uh, but what you're seeing out there, work is sewer line.
Sewer, sewer line has been, a, a list station is going to be built there as well, right?
A list station and a horse main two in the, and yeah, they're making their way all the way to, uh, the facility up on highway.
And the water system that Eldorado and Paulty are putting in jointly, how far along?
Uh, in, in design right now, um, ongoing conversations, uh, in the town about, um, community facility districts. Um, and so that work is ongoing. It's once or twice a week, there's a meeting, uh, talking about progress on that.
So Eldorado is vested.
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I heard that they were kind of backing away because they have ten years to go and they're not, they're not interested right now in pursuing.
No, they, they've been actively hiring and designing.
Oh, good. Okay.
It's fully, it's present in class and, um, and exploring, uh, railroad crossing with the A C C. So they've been active.
Oh, good. What are the markings? What are the markings on?
pavement locates. So that red two lines, the diamond electrical is usually identified as the color for red is, uh,
Growing up on the side walking stuff.
You got it. And you'll see different colors, yellow, gas, blue water, red electric. Yep.
Good.
Could be free sewer. And so all of that locate is part of that sewer project from Mesquite Trail, right? There's a lot of work they need to do to get that sewer system south.
So that'll be a big impact on Felix Road. Will you close Felix?
Uh, no, they'll be off shoulder. Uh, they'll be off to the, on the east side of Felix. They're going to get that work done before the road project really, that roads project in front of ski trails really goes to full effect. And then, um, as that sewer comes south, um, that sewers on the unimproved half of Felix Road's alignment from the railroad tracks south, um, to Merrill Ranch Parkway. And then I think even continuing to, uh, Independence. I believe that's where they were making the crossing. Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Welcome.
Hey, very good. Should I, I will make call to the commission. I just have a question. When's the next public hearing for all of us?
The next public hearing will be the next meeting of this month. So I believe that is the eighth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's coming right consecutive.
Yep.
And we'll be back home without.
Yes, we'll be back and back home. We'll be back in the council chambers without public hearing.
This, this ain't bad though.
That I can actually hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I am glad to hear that.
So the acoustics went down for folks?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have been dying every day.
That's way better.
I, I have a couple of things with the, with the recent news of the San Antone Valley Corporation. Can you just give us kind of a little update on that at the next meeting about, put the timeline of that and what we will see coming? Cause I know people have been asking. So that we know.
Yes.
That's great. And, uh, kind of a community event that I would encourage everyone to participate in, and I know the mayor would do this too, is Florence Makes a Difference Day is coming up. October eighteenth.
My garbage pickup partner.
And if you hurry to register, you'll get a T-shirt too. So you do that online at, um, partial rec. So that, that, that's a lot of fun. And every year it grows. We probably got about two hundred and fifty people last year. I'm doing projects around town. It's, it's a lot of fun and it, it makes a difference. So. I'm doing projects around town. It's, it's a lot of fun and it, it makes a difference. So. Any comments?
Well, I, I just wanna say that I think we've expanded to help a lot of indigent people. So if you're elderly or disabled or not able to do some things, which I love. Uh, I, I'm a little tired of being out on the seventy-nine, you know, we go out there, we pick up all that trash and by the next day it's all trash. So, uh, no, I really do think, so if you know of anybody, there's anybody we can help, please get with our Parks and Rec and get their name on the list.
Very good. Anything else? Not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournments.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Roy is to set the by motion for Rosa for to, if you have any one favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Very good. Thanks, everybody.